Okay, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call the February eleventh to twenty twenty-five meeting of the Edington Town Council to order. Our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. If you can stand.
I pledge allegiance to this flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of this law, of liberty, and justice for all.
And as is our tradition, I'm gonna call upon Councilman Bond to lead us in application.
We can start spraying that up this year.
You do such a good job. You do such a good job with it.
We bow here, please. For heavenly Father, we come to thee this afternoon to say thank you. Thank you for all your blessings that you've given us. Thank you for blessing our little town. Help this council to do right by this town, to make it safer, cleaner, and more beautified. Please, Lord, bless us and all our neighbors around us. Bless those folks that are still struggling from the hurricanes and tarmains, and the people out in California that are suffering from the wilds fly. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any of you may have noticed that our town manager Corey Gooden is not with us tonight. Corey's home, recovering from the flu. We wish him well and hope he's back to work soon. But we certainly did not want him here tonight if he has the flu, and so we've got Dwayne Wilt, our assistant town manager, helping us tonight. So thank you, Dwayne and Dwayne. The first order of business is approving our minutes. Those minutes were included in council's package. Everyone, I assume, has had the opportunity to review those. Are there any comments or requests for revisions of those minutes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
Sub move.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on our agenda is our public comment portion of the agenda. We have two people signed up. Didn't like to remind the speakers, as always, we have a three-minute limit per speaker. The first one is Hal Murray. Hal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Distinguished members of the town council and fellow residents of Edington. I'm Hal Murray, an Edington resident. At five P.M. last Friday, just a few days ago, we lost power to some of the circuits in the house, but not all. And what was even further confusing was that none of the breakers were fixed. We called to the Edington Electric Department after hours set things in motion. Within a short period of time, Brent and Brandon came to the house and assessed the problem. One of the hundred-and-twenty-volt legs from the transformer across the street to my house was shorting out. They returned with a bucket truck and safely and skillfully placed the bucket truck in a position where Brent could splice a new piece of wire and remove the shorted circuit. Brent very deftly, efficiently did the splicing. Now, this sounds pretty straightforward. However, the weather was raw, the sun had gone down, and Brent and Brandon were dealing with two-hundred-and-forty volts up in the air in the bucket. They staved all. Breakers in the house were reset and saw that things were back to normal. I offered a tip for the services that they both declined. Brent and Brandon are to be commended and acknowledged for their professional and skillful service. They are valued town employees. We greatly appreciate their responsiveness. Whatever they are paid, it's certainly not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Hal. And if we can note the minutes to make sure we include their last names, so there's a permanent record of the commendation that Mr. Murray just made. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Second on our list is Pat Groker. Pat?
Hi. Pat Groker, Rowby Street in Edington Mill Village. Two things tonight, all of them. You're planning to do a parking garage for the, hopefully, the company that will be coming in. Is that parking garage going to be open to the public, or is it going to be designated just as for the employees? And also, kind of on a lesser note, the dogs over at Ace are making messes. People are not picking up after them, and a lot of dogs are being allowed to run loose out there. Who is responsible for getting people to take their responsibility for their dogs? Clean up and not allow them off-leash. Thank you.
Thank you. And Pat, I can't answer one question, and we do try to answer questions. They were able to. The parking garage will be a public garage. We assume that if we're successful in getting this company here, a number of their employees will use it, but it will still be open to the general public. So, thank you. Next, we move to our committee meetings, and the only committee meeting reports we have tonight are from our administrative committee. Councilman Miller?
Thanks, Mayor. We only have one item tonight. Customer service policy update regarding the service orders. As previously discussed at our January twenty-seventh council committee meeting, the town's public works director, David Myers, and the town's electric director, Hunter Chamberlain, have requested to expand the number of days to complete service orders for customer needs from two days a week Tuesday and Thursday to three days a week Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Mayor, with this said, I move we approve the request to amend the town's customer service policy as it relates to service order dates.
Okay. And I'll give a second.
Second.
All in favor of this change to our customer service policy? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we approve that change to the customer service policy. Thank you, Councilman Miller. Next, we'll move to our new business. The first item to discuss is a council directive for the town manager and also the town attorney. And as the general public may have learned, and we certainly have learned, the plaintiff's attorney in the first monument suit is a new attorney. It was not the original attorney that we were talking with, has given us the word that the plaintiff will not execute the consent judgment that was subject to the memorandum of understanding and agreement that the town and county previously entered into. And as such, it is appropriate for us to reexamine that memorandum of understanding and agreement with the town manager. And what I would like to do as mayor is send a directive to Corey Gooden as our town manager, and also to Hood Ellis, who's here tonight as our town attorney, to get together with the county manager and the county attorney to set a new date where we can discuss the possibility of a new memorandum of understanding and agreement. I would ask that that meeting be given notice to the public and that a public hearing be held. And so, if everyone is in favor of that, or if anybody has a motion, I'll accept a motion at this time, to give those directions to both the town manager and our town attorney.
Sub move.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of such a directive going to the town attorney and town manager, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Second item of new business is a fiscal year twenty twenty-five audit contract. The contract is being proposed by Thomas Price Scott Adams and Company and Virginia. That's the same company that we've used the last couple of years. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is the last of their three-year term.
And the next year, we'll have to send that out like a request for proposal?
That is correct.
Okay. And the current year proposed rate is thirty-four thousand dollars, and that includes an audit of all financial statements for our governmental and enterprise funds as long, as well as basic financial statements. Is that correct?
That is correct, and it's the same price that it has been for the last several years.
And you and Corey Gooden have met and discussed this, and you're recommending that we pass and approve this contract?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve the audit's contract for twenty twenty-five fiscal year.
Sub move.
Okay, all right. Got a couple motions and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will enter into that contract. Item number three under new business is a capital improvement plan for our water treatment and distribution system. We've got David Myers here to answer any questions that any of you may have. Just in short summary, the capital improvement plan will focus on large-scale capital improvements, both in the near term and in the water improvement, water distribution world. That's less than seven years, and we'll also look at our long-term needs and improvement, improvements that might be needed up to twenty years. The David Myers, Roy Alons, who's a water treatment supervisor, and our engineering firm have worked very hard to complete the newest and latest capital improvement plan. Some of the improvements include two new raw water wells, the Beaver Hill well replacement, Paradise Road Water Main extension, and a few other improvements that have been recommended. Corey Gooden and working with David Roy and our engineering firm bring this to the council with the recommendation that we approve it. David, is there anything out, or any more details that you feel like you need to add?
That's about it, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll do everything.
Thank you. Do any of you have any questions of David?
Let me figure out, Mayor. I'm sorry. Start somebody's contract. When they want to break down any of it?
Yeah.
So, I guess it's from seven to twenty years. You know, our Paradise Extension, Water Main, we've already kind of started that, got the ball rolling, working with, getting easement done. That way, we can get water supply to the industry so they can keep expanding. The two well sites, we're looking at two possible new well sites here in town. I would say less than a year. We ought to see some groundbreaking.
And with the well sites, you identify parcels that we think would be good well sites?
Yes, sir. We have.
Go through the process of negotiating with the landowner.
Yes, sir. First thing we have to do is do a test well and make sure the water quality is where we need it to be.
Right.
We don't want to buy a piece of property that has bad water.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Costin. Any other questions of David? Okay, we would need a motion and a second. You got the motion. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the capital improvement plan as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have approved that plan. Thank you, David. And if you will stick around, I think you were planning on sticking around.
Yes, sir.
Please stick around in case I need some more help. The fourth item under new business is a contract amendment to the twenty seventeen wastewater spray field improvements. This contract amendment comes to us upon the recommendation of town manager Corey Gooden along with our consulting engineers at Wood and Company. The contract amendment, and this is, has been going on since two thousand and seventeen, is that correct?
That's correct. Been a long, long project.
Okay, and that is not necessarily unusual, is it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The proposed amendment to the contract calls for extending the engineering services through April of twenty twenty-five. The way the original contract was worded, this request was previously accounted for in the original funding with USDA. However, we do need to approve, approve that as an amendment to the existing contract. Does anybody have any questions of David or of me on this particular agenda item?
So, it's previously approved and accounted for, basically?
Yeah, and what they have contingency funds or a little bit of wiggle room to the better in those contracts. So, the increase is not costing us anything, but we have to approve the amendment to the contract so that they can get paid. Okay, I will entertain a motion for us to approve this particular contract amendment.
Sub move.
All right, you have a second. Any further questions or comment on this agenda item? All in favor of approving contract amendment number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have approved that contract amendment. Case number five, or excuse me, agenda item number five is something that's familiar to us all. It is the deliberation and vote on the public hearing that we had at our last meeting. The case number is MSUP twenty-five dash oh-one. It is a major special use permit application from Chilwell County ABC for a minor subdivision at five sixteen Virginia Road, which is also identified as Chilwell County PIN number seven eight oh five zero zero three six nine one six one. At the public hearing, the Chilwell County ABC Board requested a minor subdivision that would approximately divide that property at five sixteen Virginia Road in half, and it would be divided as a front portion and a back portion, with the front portion being the ABC store and the back portion being used by a local plumbing company. Because Councilman Turner and Councilman Miller sit on the ABC Board, they have asked to be recused. We've discussed this matter with our town attorney, and he agrees that it would be proper for those two councilmen to be refused from the deliberation. And vote on this matter, we don't necessarily have to vote on the recusal as long as those two agree to be recused. And I believe, based on our conversations, you do.
Yeah.
Okay, so that leaves, the remaining council members are gonna have to go through those mental gymnastics that we've done recently. There's five questions that we need to address. Before we go to that, I would want to ask if Councilman Sellers had any questions about the minor subdivision that's being requested.
I'm up to date on that.
Okay, sounds good.
I got one question. So, to the two of y'all, what are you gonna do with the other? That is a classic example of a hideous building being built, and they're moving it to a beautiful building. So now, we got this weirdly placed building that doesn't quite mimic the road with a weird driveway that has no architectural redeeming features at all. And, you know, this is the third move for that. And I mean, I'm just wondering, what are the plans for that, that building?
The back building? Are you talking about the middle?
No, I'm talking about the new building. The old building.
I mean, the old building. That'll be a new ABC store.
No, 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 the old building. The new building proves if you build nice classical architecture, something that looks good is always good. And so, there's immediately something can go in there. It's a great-looking building. I'm talking about the one you moved out of.
Okay.
Yeah, what are the plans?
It's up for sale right now, if you'd like to.
I don't want it. Certainly don't want it. I think it's, it's almost like a lesson in, in poor planning. And, I mean, anything could be anywhere. It could be in Hartford or Windsor or anywhere.
That was built back in nineteen eighty-nine, I believe.
I know. I wasn't on the council yet.
Oh, we would have heard about it.
I don't know. I think it was.
I don't know. It's been a while. It might have been.
Yeah, it's up for sale. So, whoever buys it, it'll, it'll happen now.
It's not gonna buy it.
He might.
Anyway, it's just, it's just kind of an interesting, you know, went from downtown to, to there to now to, because I think this building's great.
Oh, yeah. It's beautiful.
Works great as a, you know, well as a corner.
Two and a half times as much room.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe a new name coming to it?
Yeah.
I don't wanna.
Don't spoil it, yeah.
Don't spoil it.
A new name coming to the building?
Well, a nickname. Yeah.
Okay, I'm not gonna ask.
No, don't ask.
All right, Councilman Sellers didn't have any questions. The rest of us were here last meeting when we discussed this. Were there any other comments, questions, deliberations that we need to engage in before we move to the vote? Okay, there appearing to be none. At this time, I would ask for a motion and a second that the proposed minor subdivision will not endanger the public safety or health.
Sub move.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of finding that this proposed subdivision will not endanger the public health or safety, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The second finding and second question is that the proposed subdivision will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. Do we have a motion and a second in that regard?
Sub move.
Second.
All right. All in favor of a finding from this council that this subdivision will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, the next finding, I'll entertain a motion that this project will, or this subdivision will be in harmony with the area in which it is located?
Sub move.
Got a motion, second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of this council making a finding that this minor subdivision will be in harmony with the area which is located, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, finding number four. I will entertain a motion that this minor subdivision will be in conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan, or other plan officially adopted by town council.
Sub move.
Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Okay, does this council, all in favor of a finding that this council would find that the minor subdivision is in conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan, or other plan officially adopted by town council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are the four preliminary questions that we must answer before we go to the ultimate question. The ultimate question is whether or not the council approves this subdivision, subdivision. And so, I would entertain a motion to approve the subdivision.
Sub move.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the subdivision as requested by the Chilwell County ABC Board, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, all right. You can notify your board that we've approved it, and then they just get together with you.
And approve.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send out a S U P granted form and I'll sign the plan and stuff.
When will you be open for business?
They will start renovation March first.
September, maybe.
And hopefully, September, October. That's the goal.
It's a great-looking building.
It is. Yes, it is.
Now, I understand it's a courthouse. That courtroom works well.
They like it so much.
Yeah, that's what we heard when that sounded cool.
Yeah.
It works well.
Yep.
I've never been up there.
Well, thank you, guys, for serving on that board and also serving on this council. The next agenda item is the town manager's report, and I guess tonight we call that the assistant town manager.
And this, this comes from?
I'm handing it over to you.
Okay, yeah, this comes from the town manager. So, there was a total of four public comments that were received at the January fourteenth meeting. To recap, the questions from the public, Hal Murray had three items of concern, two records requests, one being the E C notification of property owners and the Crescent Furniture Parking Lot. Since all the initial requests are received from me have given all documentation, invited Mr. Murray to Town Hall to review how notices are put together. Not sure what remains here to be completed. Number two, the Crescent Furniture Parking Lot purchase was executed by Main Street Edington, and any request, any requests would need to be addressed to them. And for the second item, why was an increase in funding made to Main Street Edington? This fiscal year increase was part of the budget planning process for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. Entire council agreed and determined the investment in our Main Street program with the three large vacant buildings downtown needed to increase to help with the overall success for the occupancy of these large spaces. And overall, the organization has not seen an increase within the past few years. Every one dollar in public investment equates to about seventeen dollars in private investment. Any salary-related questions would need to be addressed to the Main Street Executive Director or the Main Street Board. Number two, J D Grant thanked Main Street Edington for the business spotlights. He asked Saga to sign the major special use permit, and yes, we do have a signed copy of the major special use permit agreement with Saga. And he asked about the Coke Avenue update. We have completed all environmental, and we have a clean bill of health. We should have had this final report any day now from ECS. We would like to start with site planning very shortly. The site was recently forestry moles to expose the landscape and determine any cleanup of debris that was needed. Number three, Jimmy Alligood had questions about the historical debt from joining Electric Cities and when the debt would, or had it gone away. So, what would the electric rates go down, or when would the electric rates go down? Here is a recap of the full history of the debt. N C E M P A began issuing debt in nineteen eighty-two, fifty years, when that organization became a joint owner with Duke of Generation assets. And in nineteen ninety-four, the debt peaked at three point six billion. In twenty fifteen, N C E M P A sold its ownership to Duke, and of these Generation assets, resulting in an average of nineteen percent decrease in wholesale rates, N C E M P A issued the remaining debt of approximately four hundred and eighty million to be paid over ten years, with the final debt payment being made in July of twenty twenty-five. Edington's current debt payment recovered through rider number eight at sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-five cent per month, with results in an average of eight point five percent decrease in wholesale power costs in July. Even with that said, STAB is working to determine how to extend the time between increasing rate changes, because there are two main variables now that, in addition to simply removing the debt, must be considered. Number one, true up cost, estimated thirty million this year. And two, potential whole rate increases from carbon program, House Bill nine fifty-one. I don't see increase this year, but some rate structure changed, changes by class. Our goal is to delay rate increases as long as possible. Number four was from Susan Eagles. Mayor Ha addressed that at the last meeting. Items considered timely important from council. Councilman Costin, of course, wanted to say the plan today was successfully executed, and the venue was great for the meeting goals. Councilman Turner had two questions. Board openings, we had a first group at the twenty-seventh of January meeting. We'll have our next group at the next meeting. With that, it's been a little difficult getting some of the applicants on board with the dates and everything, so that's why they've kind of been pushed back a couple of times. We didn't want to have one get approved and then have another one come to get approved, so we want to have them at the same time. So hopefully, if we can agree on a day, which I think most have emailed me back, we'll have it at the next meeting. B was Granville Street. The town will make repairs as soon as possible. Councilman Sellers had questions about the shot spot or concerns. It's still ongoing. Upfit's being made. We're meeting biweekly to make all the necessary improvements. We'll make an update in the near future. So, that was the town council.
Okay, I've got one request as it relates to those things. I mistakenly told Councilman Alligood that we would not be reporting on the Electric Cities and electric rates and all that. Will you make sure that you and Corey reach out to him and, and give him a copy of what you just said?
Yeah.
I don't know how I overlooked that, but he was here earlier.
Okay.
And was not gonna stick around if that would not be addressed. So, Jimmy, if you're watching, I apologize. I was speaking to the TV all day.
Oh, he was here.
He was here. I was apologizing to be his own watchers. The next item of business is items considered timely important by council. Councilman Costin will start to the left. Do you have anything that you would like to?
I do, but I'll give me a second. I'm looking for it.
Okay, Councilman Dixon?
I just want to say, nineteen ninety-three, I became the town attorney, and Roy Harold, the mayor, brought those contracts into my office and dumped them in there, all the nuclear power contracts, put them down, said, read them and get us out of this. And I couldn't see them. My desk, I was so high. And it was impossible.
Well, from what I understand on the history of that, that a lot of lawyers in bigger cities than Edington, a lot of lawyers and bigger firms than mine and yours, and Patrick Sellers have taken a look at that over the years, and.
I thought it was an easy call, huh?
Same question, I asked several times.
Yeah, anyway.
Councilman Bond?
I've been getting a lot of calls about this stop sign on Grandville Street. People are saying that they are stopped at Martin Luther King Drive, and the traffic coming down Granville Street never stopped, never slowed down. And they are complaining about it.
I have seen, I have seen the large majority of people on Granville Street stop, but I have seen some people just go right on through. And I don't know if it's a habit.
They stop in the middle of the intersection.
What's that?
Beginning of the intersection, they stop right in the middle.
But I've seen it happen twice myself. I don't know if it's somebody being a hard I don't know if it's somebody being a hardhead because they don't like it, or just by force of habit, they're not paying attention to it. But chief, if you keep an eye on that, because I have noticed it.
Yeah, we've got, I bet you I've got seventy-five complaints on that. I want the guys to give everybody a thirty-day grace period. We wrote several warnings there, and folks will blow through it or stop in the middle. I mean, just all kinds of weird stuff going on with that.
If you would, just keep a close eye on them. I know you will. Appreciate it.
Can I make a political announcement?
I hope I'm all, like the announcement. What announcement are you going to make?
I will seek a nomination for the fourth council, the fourth board.
I knew you were in the process of deciding, so that's, thank you for letting us know.
So many people had asked and wanted to know what I answered, so I thought maybe they'll be watching TV and make the announcement.
Well, I know, I know that you do a very, very good job for all of Edington and certainly for your ward. And you do a good job standing up for them, so thank you for letting us know that. Thank you very much. Councilman Miller?
Playground equipment, how we, do we have it in? We do, when you think it will be installed in parts?
We do, and David can give an update. We reached out to the salesman. Something happened with the paperwork, it got postponed. I did reach back out yesterday for an update. Have not got an update. I was hoping I'd have something before today. As soon as we find something out, I'll let Corey know. Two or three months, maybe less, it should be delivered. I really don't have anything other than that.
When was it ordered?
Six months ago.
It's been a while, I don't remember.
At least six months ago. They, for some reason, someone dropped the ball on their end. They did not reach out to us when the paperwork got lost or mishandled. We followed up with them, and that's when they told us. So we got it corrected, and we're just waiting on their response.
As a follow-up, I, too, have announced my candidacy for Councilman O'Rourke. It's coming here, so.
Thank you for letting us know that also, Councilman Miller. Councilman Sellers?
I thank both of these councilmen for being willing to serve another term in the people of Edington. Amendment, Councilman Bonds concerns, I live on Gale Street, right around the corner from that stop sign, and it has greatly slowed down traffic in terms of speed. There's a couple streets that can be difficult to turn on the Bramble from because of trees and issues like that. I feel much safer already because of that stop sign. Hopefully, the people of Edington and Choone County will get used to it. If not, the police department will have to take it down after the grace period.
We give them a third of their girls, I think that's funny.
But I appreciate that living there, it's really slowed people down on Bramble.
It's quiet, quietened, the street also, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, very much so.
Yeah, I've heard from the, one of the residents that lives on one of the corners. And she said, I mean, she talks about it every morning, she has coffee and coffee. She's so excited about it. I mean, she said it's just completely changed the way people go through there now.
It's a noticeable difference.
Yeah, I've seen people running, I've seen people stop in the middle. Maybe they'll learn.
And I live right down the street from Councilman Sellers, and I've noticed the same thing that he's noticed. Just a lot quieter and a lot slower, and hopefully a lot safer. It certainly feels like it. Councilman Turner?
I know it's been maybe a month and a half, I think, since we met on all the homes that we were making a decision on. I know we pushed about six of them to ninety days. Have we seen any help with that, that maybe it helped them want to do something?
I can answer some of that, yeah. So we've seen a couple move forward. The town is trying to everything in its power to help the people that have been identified or will be identified at their next meetings in the future. We've had a couple, a few applicants come in, and town staff has sat down with them to help fill out paperwork to make sure, you know, they're able to get it turned in or get it filled out and turned in properly. We will be handling, turning it in for them and stuff. We're seeing some of them, we are in foreclosure and haven't been able to make contact with anybody throughout the entire process. And I can bring an update for you. We have several, I think we have another twelve that's ready to come in front of town council. Just wanted to see what we can do with this initial group before we came back with that. So we'll, I'll be able to give a full update report probably coming up here soon.
How many, I know there's one. How many total have started making some repairs and making improvements?
I know of, I know of one, we're trying to get, trying to identify some funding for another homeowner. And some of the other ones, most of the other ones are vacant or just not concerned with making improvements.
And we'll just have to do what we have to do in ninety days. Councilman Costin, were you able to?
Oh, it's fine.
Find it?
Yeah, I'll follow up with it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other concerns other than that one that was on your mind? All right, Councilman Bond, I know you get used to meetings like this. And so I'm going to ask someone with the last name Bond to make a motion to adjourn.
I wonder if I should say sub move.
Okay. Do we have a second? All in favor of adjourned the meeting? Please signify by saying aye. Thank you, folks, for being here. Appreciate it.